Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of Beaver Creek City Council. Before we get started this evening, we have a very special presentation to make this morning, this evening. And so, you may be able to see the sign. Is it in the picture or not? But it, we've got an addition, and it's the girls' cross-country team. So Coach, would you come up here for a minute, please? Coach, I'm gonna ask you to invite your girls up and introduce them for us, please.
Okay, I can do that. We had four seniors, all of them actually are getting Division One scholarships to run in college, so it's gonna be really cool. I'll introduce state champion, also second in the nation, and was named the Gatorade Ath Ohio Runner of the Year just today, Taylor Ewer. Come on up, please. Second in the states, also Ohio, gonna be running at the University of Syracuse, senior, that would be Savannah Rourke. Next up would be another, Allstate, seventh in the state of Ohio, gonna be running at the University of Cincinnati, Jody Pierce. And my fourth senior, that will be running at UNC Wilmington, Senior Kendall Hopps. Then we had junior, who was also Allstate, ninth in the state of Ohio, that would be Julianne Williams. And now we get to our young babies, our sophomores and freshmen. We have our sophomore, Grace Daly. We have sophomore Samantha Thomas. We have sophomore Megan Now. And our one lone freshman, Miss Jamie Comfort. The ladies had a great season. We were basically undefeated in the state of Ohio. We were ranked number one from day one really till the end. We had the fastest, so we score in cross-country, top five runners. Our top five average was 18:03, which is the fastest ever in the state of Ohio. We put four girls in the top 10 at the state meet, which has never been done, in Division One girls in the state of Ohio, and we won the state championship by over 70 points. We also ran at Nike Regionals qualifying for Nike Nationals, which would be only the fifth girls' team from the state of Ohio to ever do that, placing 13th in the nation, despite having one of our girls qualifying, Julianne Williams, who ran the meet, ran it on a broken foot. At Regionals, she was not able to run Nationals, which hurt our score a little bit, but just to qualify for Nationals and really represent the city of Beaver Creek in our school district. The real cool thing about these ladies academically, I think our cumulative is over four points. But the real magic really happens every single day at practice. And the cool thing about the street sign is we run all over the city, so every time I tell the girls when they run by the signs and they see that, it really motivates us to try to get that, because we had to go, we went from cross-country to ex-country. Hopefully, we'll have to make it XC, because we'll keep the numbers moving. But it really is an honor to be with this group of girls, with so many seniors. They really just needed me to be the cheerleader, because they knew what it took after what happened last year, and really just represent our city and our school district with great pride, so you can be really proud. And as I said, the really magic happens every single day at practice. To do what they did is amazing, so it's an honor to represent our city. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Anybody have something to say on council?
Sure, I mean, it's an honor for you to represent your city. It's an honor to be standing up here with all of you young ladies. You've done such an amazing job, and you've just booked not just '18, but this year as well. That's an incredible accomplishment. Ryan and I were looking at some of the years, but I have some older championships on here, but you guys have done such a great job the past two years, and I couldn't be more proud to stand up here with you. Congratulations to our seniors, you guys have done such a great job. My one lone freshman, we expect great good. I know you're gonna do well, so welcome to the team. I think you guys have done such a great job, and we're so honored to have you here tonight. And thank you again all for coming.
Thank you.
Very well said. Anyone else? No, we're not finished yet. We're not finished yet. We're all getting started. Anybody? Ladies, thank you for what you do. I mean, it just makes, this is the type of thing that makes it a pleasure to be and live in Beaver Creek. I mean, it's just, I mean, I'm almost speechless. I don't know how a coach did it, he just rambled on and he knows what he's doing. But we do have, you do have your own individual billboard. There you go. So we want to give one of those to each of you, and if you could start on that end, I know we'd all love to shake your hand, so if you could just come down the row, please. And Vice Mayor will issue you a proclamation.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you. I want you to stay right here. I will. I wanna shake a couple hands off first.
Congratulations, Coach.
There we go. Thank you. I will say everybody.
Congratulations, dear.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Best wishes. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
All the best.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Best wishes to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Best wishes to you.
Thank you.
All right, well, ladies, you already know, and I know you're very proud of your coach, but we have a letter here that on behalf of council, we would like to give to your coach. And for those that don't know, I'm gonna read it. "We would like to take this opportunity to congratulate you as being named the U.S. Track and Field and Cross Country Coaches Association High School Girls' Cross Country Coach of the Year in Ohio."
Wow.
Now, that is a... "Your passion to encourage, organize, and lead your student athletes is deserving of much praise. We would like to wish you, Coach Russ, and the girls' cross-country team the best as you continue to demonstrate excellence on the playing field and way beyond." So Coach, I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you so much.
On behalf of the entire city council.
Thank you, ladies.
So, thank you all very much.
These ladies, they represent our city very well athletically, but more importantly, they do it academically, and I'm just really proud to be a part of the system, and really proud to be a part of the city of Beaver Creek. So thank you guys for all your support. Thank you. Thank you, girl.
Sure. Take your time, Mayor. Get you some photos. And he gets to take the sign with him.
And I'll take the sign with you, don't worry about that.
The freshmen get to stand.
As long as they have...
All right, guys. This way, first. Start over here first.
All right, come to me, guys.
Thanks.
That's why I snapped down the first time.
Thank you guys so much.
There we go.
Look, honey, where I'm right now.
Give him just a second, too. Clear out. Yeah. That's something. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Rushing.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. And if you would all join me for the pledge, and a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And ladies and gentlemen, I'm sure most of you already know, but in this moment of silence, we need to remember a friend, a colleague, as we have lost our city planning and development director. Some of you may have read that we were also named number 10 in the state of Ohio as far as a place to live and raise a family. Well, part of that is because of Mr. Jeff McGrath. He was dedicated to making sure that our city moved in a direction that he thought was good for the community. So just a moment of silence, please. If we have an agenda before us, any changes?
Seeing none, I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Ordinance resolutions and PUDs, ordinance 20-10.
This is a second reading of an ordinance amending the zoning map by rezoning approximately 6.29 acres of land described as Book Six, page six, parcel 22, on the, from the I-1 Light Industrial to OPR-1 Office Research Park.
Thank you. This is the second reading of this ordinance, so this is a public hearing. Is there anyone present that would like to address council on this application? Seeing no one, this will move on to the third reading. Thank you.
Second reading.
Oh, that's right, we changed that. Okay. So, this is the second reading, and it's sponsored by Councilmember Rushing. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve ordinance 20-1.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 20-01. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is resolution 20-03.
This is a resolution declaring the necessity of the construction and improvement of certain roadways in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, related to the project known as Cedar Brook Flower Farm.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Last fall, the city received a petition from the developer of the Cedar Brook Flower Farms development, requesting that the cost of improvements along their frontage on Shakertown Road be paid for via special assessment. In order to proceed with the special, setting up the special assessment, there's two pieces of legislation that are needed. The ordinance, or the resolution rather, before you now, and the next item on the agenda, the ordinance to proceed. Essentially, the improvements consist of the construction of curb, side path, and drainage, and minor widening along that section of Shakertown Road along their frontage. And what we're looking at doing is combining this assessment project with a larger project we have planned along Shakertown Road. Because the bigger the project, a lot of times, the lower the unit costs, so it will save everybody money in doing that manner. Right now, we're looking at constructing these improvements in 2022. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? Just for the broadcast, this, the assessment, when it's assessed like this, it doesn't cost the taxpayer a penny.
Correct.
On an assessment. Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 20-03. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is ordinance 20-02.
This is the first reading of an ordinance to proceed with the design, construction, installation, and inspection of roadway improvements in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, and related to the project known as Cedar Brook Flower Farm.
Yes, as I said, this is the second piece of legislation relates to the resolution you just approved.
Okay, thank you. All right, this is an ordinance, so is there anyone here this evening that would like to address council on this application? Seeing none, we will move forward. Do I, any discussion? Is there a motion to move it to the second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 20-02 on to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next is ordinance 20-03.
This is the first reading of an ordinance to levy a municipal motor vehicle license fee pursuant to Section 4504.173 of the Ohio Revised Code, as authorized by House Bill 62, and amending the codified ordinance of the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, by adding new Section 35.54 license tax for operation of motor vehicles to Chapter 35 Finance and Taxation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. We discussed this at the previous work session, but just to give you a recap, as Diane mentioned, this was passed as part of House Bill 62 that provided the Ohio transportation budget for the two-year, the biannual budget that they generate. And within that bill was a provision that allowed municipalities to levy a $5 permissive tax on the registration of motor vehicles. This tax implemented would fund, it would come directly to the city, 100% of it would be funded and come to the city for that tax, and the funds have to be used for authorized purposes, including the construction, maintenance, and repair of public streets. The fee will be collected every time we have an annual registration for any vehicle within the city of Beaver Creek, and if this ordinance is passed, it will be implemented January 1st of 2021. Just to give you a brief history, we do have the, right now, the county and the city collect $20 worth of the permissive tax. $5 of that goes directly to the city. The county has the three other ones, the one they share with the city with 50% coming to us. There's another one that the county has that, in essence, we have to request, basically show the jobs that we've completed in order to get some of that funding from the county. And then the other one is strictly a county tax. The initial one that we have in the city, the $5 one that comes directly to us, was passed in 1987. So again, we haven't seen a increase in the permissive registration fees for that long, and the county registration fees were all developed between '86 and '91. So again, this particular tax and this provision to impose this tax hasn't really been adjusted, or we haven't had the opportunity to implement another tax since that time. Obviously, during that time, we've used their funds, the state funds, for the repairs and constructions of the city streets, and we believe that this opportunity gives us a avenue to generate a little bit more additional revenue. We're expecting it to be about $200,000 to assist us in our street programs that, again, even though we're trying to catch up on the street infrastructure, this will go a long way into, again, helping that process. So we would recommend implementation of that as part of our, again, short-term and long-term strategy of looking for alternative revenue sources for the city in order to maintain our infrastructure properly. So this House bill that was passed gave us the opportunity to do that, and we'd like to avail ourselves to that opportunity, so.
All right, thank you. All right, is there, this is the inordinate, so this is the first reading. Is there any public input on this ordinance? Seeing none, is there any discussion? Any questions? Comments?
I think it's badly needed. Your Honor, we're always constantly challenged with the needs of road improvement and keeping neighborhoods looking nice, and I think this is just an additional tool for us to try to make up for a lot of areas that really need it.
I have no questions, but I did want to make a comment that I appreciate you looking into alternative revenue sources, because I think it's important to keep our infrastructure, like Chuck said, up to date, and I appreciate it, Bill.
No problem. Anyone else? Do I hear a motion? So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 20-03 on to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is resolution 20-04.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Yolo Development One LLC for the design and construction of a new traffic signal at the intersection of North Fairfield Road and Rock Drive.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
As part of the approval for the medical office facility currently under construction at the intersection of North Fairfield and Rock Drive, there is a traffic signal approved, given that certain conditions are first met. The biggest of those conditions is that the driveway to St. Luke's must be relocated before that signal can be constructed. This proposed agreement doesn't change any of those terms or previous approvals. The only thing it does is the developer approached us about this, and given that they don't build a lot of traffic signals and the city does, and we're gonna take possession of this signal once it's built, both parties thought it was a better idea for the city to administer the design and construction of it, where all the costs are still being paid by the developer. The only difference is we're gonna be running a public contract and using our inspection to run the project.
Okay.
And with that, I'd ask, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them about the agreement, and for what it's worth, is we're pretty much ready to go on this once this is approved by council and the city manager. We have a designer lined up and ready to hit the ground running with this.
You're gonna do both sides, the St. Luke's side as well as the new development side?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
As far as the design.
And the signal will serve both the St. Luke's side and the Rock Drive side. And again, we won't, the city manager won't sign the contract until we get assurances that everything is worked out between St. Luke's and the developer as far as that driveway moving.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'm just really excited to see this go in. I know I've had a lot of questions about this, and I know St. Luke's driveway is, can be very popular at certain times of the day. Again, that is the church that I go to, so I know, trying to get in and out of there sometimes is difficult. I think the addition across the street is great, so I've been really looking forward to seeing these plans, and I thank you for bringing this forward. So I have nothing else. And I'd actually like to make the motion if there's no other discussion.
I have one question.
Please.
Sure, please.
Will that traffic signal be coordinated with the others along North Fairfield Road?
It certainly will. We actually have a coordinated system that runs between Lance and Jonathan along North Fairfield Road. We have fiber optic cable connecting all these together. One of the provisions when we design this will be to connect to that fiber optic system and to work out coordination timings.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve resolution 20-04.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 20-04. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Decision items. Council appointments to local agencies. Annually, we appoint, or every two years, I think, actually, we appoint council members to fill slots on various boards and commissions around the area. So we've got a current partial list. Is there anyone that wants to fill in any of these blanks? We do have, Councilmember Garcia is gonna be the backup, the secondary for the Beaver Creek Youth Development Committee, and so that leaves a couple others there if somebody wants to play tic-tac-toe a little bit. We do have a couple new council members that'll be coming on after a while, and we will encourage them to pick an empty slot. So with that, do I, how do you want to do this? Read who they are as we have them?
Yes, I would suggest that, Mayor.
Currently, on Green County Family and Children First, we have Councilman Curran, without a secondary. Green County Water and Advisory Task Force, we have Councilman Bales, without a secondary. Greater Dayton Mayors and Managers, I am the primary, and the vice mayor is the secondary. Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, Councilmember Garcia is the primary, and Councilmember Bales the secondary. Upper Little Miami River, there's nobody in either one of those slots. Ohio Mayor Alliance, Mayor's Alliance is, I'm the primary, and the vice mayor is secondary. Beaver Creek Youth Development Committee, Vice Mayor Adams is the primary, and Councilmember Garcia is the secondary. So do I have a motion to appoint, make those appointments?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to make appointments as I just read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. If you feel energetic, you can fill in a slot, though, anytime you want. Council time. We'll start on my far right, if we don't mind. Councilmember Bales?
Thank you, Mayor. You probably said it best at the beginning of the meeting, but I just want to reiterate our thoughts and prayers for the whole McGrath family. Not only will he be missed in this organization, but throughout the city and really throughout the region. I don't think I can put into words how much I have been shocked by the news and really pray for his family. I'd love to, at some point in time, talk about a way to honor him around City Hall or around the city, or something like that. Moving on, I'd like to remind people that tomorrow night, former First Lady Hope Taft will be giving a talk at the Beaver Creek Historical Society's quarterly meeting at Peace Lutheran Church at 7:00. And then also, like you said, Mayor, congratulations to the city for being listed as a top 10 spot to live in Beaver Creek. It's fantastic news. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would like to take a moment myself to remember Jeff McGrath. I got to know Mr. McGrath personally when I was appointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals. I think I was 18 years old at the time. I was a young gun, if you will, and, you know, he had the ability to, you know, tell you when, you know, what you need to be heard, and had the ability to, you know, mentor you and give you the guidance, even for a young pup like me when I was on the BZA. His work and dedication to the community will be unmatched. Something can be said for someone who's born and raised here, who worked through the ranks and continues to give back. So I do want to remember him and his family at this time. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you. Yes, well, I will continue with my honoring of Jeff McGrath. He was really fun to work with, and it's a hard sight to see his chair covered with black cloth over there, but he, I remember working with him for personal improvements on my home, and we took out maps, and we had graphs, and we had charts, and his whole desk was covered for something as small as a driveway extension. But he really took his job seriously, and he loved what he did, and he will be very missed, and I'll miss his energy and humor at these meetings, too. So just keeping his family in our thoughts. On another note, though, I would like to congratulate the girls' cross-country team again. Being surrounded by such accomplished young ladies was very impressive tonight, both academically and athletically. It's a very great honor to have such young women in our city, and I know we have such wonderful young people in our schools and in our community, and we cannot be more grateful for all of their wonderful accomplishments. I also want to address, one quick issue is the expansion of the Ed Choice, which happened in November and is still slightly changing every day. I received a few calls and questions on this, and while I am more than happy to look into this information for you, I have to tell you, my information will be secondhand. This is information that I get directly from the school board, and we are still separate and distinct entities, city council and the school board. So I've spoken with Joanne Regano, who's the president of the school board. She is more than happy to take any of your phone calls at any time. Again, I am still happy to field any questions that you may have, but just know that the information I get may be outdated by the time I get to answer it. These things are changing on an hourly and daily basis, from my understanding, but the school board really is doing a great job keeping a handle on things and making sure everybody's well informed. So if you do have questions, please feel free to direct them to us or to the school board directly. That's all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Curran?
Comments on a great person, in my opinion. Jeff McGrath has been mentioned here by all the other council members. I think one of the greatest skills that he had was really his people skills, his ability to be able to relate and work with people, at the same time, certainly knowing the limits that he has to face, and that people may have to face, but he had a way of talking to people, and I'll... to people, and I'll really surely miss that. I didn't have the opportunity to know him as long as some of you did, but on the Planning Commission, I had that great honor and be sorely missed. And I would agree with Councilman Bales. Tomorrow night, the Beaver Creek Historical Society will have Hope Taft speaking over here, I think at 7:00 at Peace Lutheran Church. So encourage people to stop by and hear her words. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Adams?
I, too, want to echo what my fellow council members have said about Jeff. I didn't know him for very long, but he was quite a guy. He was, he had time for everybody and a great family man, great for our community. I mean, I had an opportunity in another position Friday night to work the parking lot at the funeral home, and to see the number of people that came out to honor him was, it was impressive. And they were from all walks of life, not just Beaver Creek, everywhere. Jeff was well-known throughout the whole community, and he'll be sadly missed. Aside from that, a couple weeks ago, I attended, along with Mayor Stone and his wife, the Patriots Pen and Community Awards Program at the VFW. The top three finishers in both the essays and the speeches were there. One young lady, the one that won the speech contest, was amazing. I mean, almost brought me to tears with her speech, but it told me a lot about these young people. We also, the VFW also recognized one of our police officers as Officer of the Year. I want to congratulate Sergeant Scott Spangler for being named that by the VFW. And then I, too, want to congratulate the cross-country team. They, hearing what they've done is amazing. You know, I used to be an athlete four or five lives ago, but watching what these girls can do and then to see them getting scholarships to run and continue what they love to do, I think is really great. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I agree with you, Vice Mayor. The VFW Patriot Pen was very impressive. It really makes you, you know, we're talking about young people tonight, whether it be cross-country or whether it be these patriots that are writing essays, it makes you feel good about tomorrow. You know, there's a lot of good young people out there that are going to follow us and keep this country where it needs to be. But I met Jeff, well, I was on council when Jeff was hired, and so I've known him his entire employment, and this is the only job he's ever had, I believe. So we were, we worked together very well professionally. We were friends. I've had him up on my boat, and we've had the good stories. I could tell some stories that would make us all laugh, and that, sometimes that's what we need to do, really laugh a little bit once in a while, but it's a sad time for the family. And I seriously say, when I said earlier on that Beaver Creek being named the 10th best city in the State of Ohio to live and raise a family, that's out of 186 cities that were evaluated in this state, and it takes people like Jeff, and Jeff didn't do everything by himself, but it takes people like Jeff to make that happen. And so I'm going to miss him, and I can't talk anymore, so I'm going to be quiet. So we will move on to the city manager's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just echo everything council has said. Jeff was, you know, one of my direct reports the last three years, got to know him very well. Yeah, I could have a few stories myself, but, you know, it really, the way that the viewing Friday night spoke volumes of the people that turned out. One of the family members told me when I got to talking to them that a lady who stood and waited over two hours was just a resident that Jeff helped one time with his zoning issue, and she felt obligated to compare respects, and that speaks volumes for Jeff. And, you know, Jeff is one that will never be forgotten, and the evidence of what he's helped this city become will be here for many years. So I would just continue to lift up his family in prayer. It's, you know, things we, we here will know, we can't just move on so easily, but a lot of people will just move on with their lives that weren't directly connected necessarily, but I just encourage people to still lift up the McGraths when you think of them. And I did want to especially thank, on that, speaking of that, and I know Vice Mayor spoke of it, but the COPP helped out at the Tobias Funeral Home and directing. Thank you for their time and efforts in putting that in. That really helped out. And I did want to mention Teresa and JR Geraci, who are the owner of the Pizza Dive and the new, what's that center, what's that called?
Mangin'.
Mangin', Center. They allow the people to park there, to overflow. That really did help out because every space was taken, so a special holler out to them and a very big thanks. Just moving forward, just a couple of construction updates. Things are going, things are happening. It's January, but, you know, we have to prepare for winter weather breaks here, which we've had a light winter, but I should knock on wood, here will be a blizzard next week for me saying that. But Kemp Road Signals Project, that's currently being advertised for bids. That's going to be opening February 12th for the bids. Lock Drive Call for Replacement, the bids were held open back in December 11th, and the city's working awarding the construction contract with STRM Construction and Colonel Glen Highway Enhancements. This project's currently being advertised for bids, and that's going to be scheduled for February 5th. So we've got things coming up. We've got even more coming up in projects as we move on to the weather, the construction season. I just wanted, again, to thank the retirements that we had. John Volcha of Engineering, he put in, just recently is retiring, he had 27 years with the city. He stressed, well, I have 30 years in public service, but 27 with the city. We'll miss John. Jim Stoll with the Police Department, he put in many years. There was that 22 years, 21, 22 years? So congratulations to Jim. And Chris Bukai. Everybody here will thank her because without her, you wouldn't get our paychecks. So Chris is in our finance, our payroll, so she's going to have about 20, 21, 22 years, and so we wish them all happy retirements and enjoy life, enjoy everything, and don't sit down, but get out and do what you always wanted to do, for sure. And upcoming senior center events, just a quick, because these come up real quick if we don't mention them. Valentine's Day, February 14th, 12:30, live music, dancing, and appetizers sponsored by Trinity Community of Beaver Creek. I tell you what, the seniors know how to have fun. They dress up, they, you know, they, they make me feel old because they're acting younger than I do when I go in there. So they're really, they have a good time. Day of Caring Pancake Breakfast proceeds go to the Day of Caring, 365. That's Sunday, February 23rd. So that's a little fundraiser, $6 adult, $4 for senior, cash payments, tickets at the door, and we'll be accepting personal hygiene items for donations. So just keep the senior center in your mind when you're thinking of doing some things. Last thing I wanted to say is about shipping and hauling. Has started the vegetative debris at the Two-Sides C-Mex Reserve and the Environmental Services. Specifically, C-Mex is where it has started. It's expected materials at C-Mex will be ground before the end of February and processing, then they'll move to Environmental Services, and that'll be scheduled in late February and continue into March. Just want to remind residents that the Green County Environmental Services does have the capacity for organic materials that's been generated by tornado. It's January now, but when you're doing it in February or March, as it gets warmer and you still have more brush to clean up, you know, anything the size of a firewood size, maximum size brush, four inches in diameter and eight feet long, that can be taken there, four inch in diameter, 14 inch to 18 inches long. Key there is for, you know, the tornado impacted people, there is no charge. Please contact the Environmental Services. They're at the 2145 Greenway Boulevard, and that's in Xenia, and there's a phone number there, is 562-5925. Please contact them for more information, as I know springtime will bring more cleaning, even for those not impacted by tornado. You know, it seems like in spring, you should have probably done it in fall, but even in spring, sometimes you realize some overgrowth is happening or limbs that are down because of all the wind we've received. I just want to share with you, just real quick, this, these are a couple pictures. This is the shredder and a little crane kind of thing that's lifting up the debris and putting it into the shredder, and here's a better shot. So that backhoe right, okay, right there then puts, and it twists, it can spin around, then it loads it in here, and then, of course, you can see where it shoots it into the truck. Now, back on me here, this is the size of material. So people have said, well, isn't that mulch and free mulch to everybody? This is not mulch. Mulch is ground about two or three or four more times before it gets to that, and then it's treated and everything else, but big chunks of wood. And of course, that's just to get it into the back of the truck so that it can go to, on the processing. There's the back of a semi-truck. Our staff, the engineering staff and the township staff, we have to measure each truck that's being used, label them, modify, you know, so we know it's truck number one, truck number two, truck number three. We literally measure the inside of them so we are assured on accuracy, and as they come through, we also have to take a picture of each truck and the load volume, all that to meet our FEMA requirements so that we get the maximum amount of reimbursement. We do not want to lose a dime. So we are having that anytime, they are there, which will be Monday, or Monday through Saturday, I think it's what, 8 to 8, something like that, the max will be 8 to 8. They're working, I think, up until almost, they won't work in the dark at this point in time, but it may get later as the days get longer, brighter. So just, that's what's going on. It's at C-Mex right now. The noise isn't too bad. We've, you know, we thought it was going to be a little louder, but they could be starting up a second machine, too, so it could get a little louder. We have been in good communications with the City of Fairborn, notifying them, and they're the ones that helped us set the working hours to start with. So all's going well there. Just wanted to pass on that information, and I believe that's all I have tonight.
All right, thank you. All right, at this point in time on the agenda, it is citizen comments. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address council on any issue at all? No one? In that case, I would like to ask for a motion for executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the purpose of consideration of the appointment of a public official.
I have a second. I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. And when we, we will come back here. There will be a decision made after we return, so if you wish to stay around, please do. But at this point, we're excused into executive session. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are back on the air. I need a motion to exit executive session, please.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to exit executive session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. I have a motion to reconvene the regular scheduled meeting.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to reconvene this regular scheduled meeting of the city council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a, an announcement that we'd like to make or a motion that we'd like to make?
Mr. Mayor, I move to select the following applicants to interview for the council vacancies.
Microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll get there. Mr. Mayor, I make a move to select the following applicants for interviews for the council vacancies. Glenn Duer, Carol Graff, Paul Newman Senior, Tiffany Novak, and Tiffany Schwartz.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to, to proceed with interviews on five selected candidates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.